17th, 2021 meeting of Lawrence County Board of Commissioners. What do all please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Mrs. Lamb, would you be so kind as to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the law.
I am in the United States of America and through the Republic, for which this stands, by creation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And all please remain standing for a brief moment of silence. Thank you. Vanessa, please call.
Commissioner Boeckel?
Here.
Commissioner Boeckel?
Here.
Commissioner Boyd?
Here. We have, we're muted good, by the way, with the reaction time. Some people, they fumble if their first time around.
That would be putting you to work today.
That's okay. That's all right.
I will note that we are being live streamed, being broadcast for our YouTube channel for public consumption. Anyone who is viewing via the YouTube channel, whether they cannot make it here in person or whether they are still a little bit fearful of COVID-19, the Delta variant, they're welcome to submit public comments to us at mhds@lawrencecountypa.gov. That's mhds@lawrencecountypa.gov. Please signal in subject line that it's public comment and we will enter it into the record as Row Officer Reports and Comments. Looking around, I'm not seeing any representatives of Row Officers with us today. Public comments, do we have any member of the public here who wishes to make comment?
We can still make one at the end.
Absolutely. We're in good shape. Fiscal and contractual, we have no advertising, no receipt of business presence, no fiscal reports, no report on clothes. We do have two warrant registers dated August 10th and August 13th, 2021. I'll give my colleagues a minute to check those over and take a motion to accept and file the warrant register.
So moved.
Please bear with me.
I will second the motion.
All right, we have motion seconded. Any further discussion here, none? Question of motion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Up next, we have approval of Tuesday, August 10th, 2021 meeting minutes. Again, I'll give my colleagues a minute to check those over and take a motion to approve the minutes or make any necessary expedient changes.
So moved.
Second. Good motion, seconded. Any further discussion here, none? Question of motion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. We have one presentation of written communications today. It's a misrepresentation of planned land development for Chapter 102 permits for Columbia Gas of Pennsylvania. This is a development located in Slippery Rock Township. As it reads, the project is proposing to install a plastic pipeline via open cut and directional board primarily through existing utility right-of-way and meadow condition and along eastern roads. ENS controls will include compost filter, soft water walls, ours trench plugs, and erosion control blanket. And the location is unnamed tributary at Slippery Rock Creek and then Slippery Rock Creek and Rush Run, again, as it takes place in Slippery Rock Township. As I always note with these, when certain entities apply for different permits in Pennsylvania, they are required to notify the Board Commissioners of their permit application. The Board Commissioners has no approval authority over such permits, which is required under state law to be notified. But unless there's any comments, I will take a motion to accept and file for this one.
So moved.
Second. The motion is second. Any further discussion here, none? Question of motion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Staff reports, we have any members of staff here with us today who had anything to report above and beyond what's already on the agenda? Nothing new at MHDS? All right. Saw you guys at the fair yesterday. Good job. It was fun to play around with the dogs a little bit, but nice booth. I'll move on to Commissioner Reports and Comments. First on deck, says Loretta, you have four.
No, nothing prepared, but off the top of my head, since, you know, we are, the county has been moving to that high level of transmission for COVID. And, you know, not getting into any type of a vaccination debate or not, but let's at least get back to even the basics, you know, with hygiene, washing your hands, using hand sanitizer, things like that, and see what we can do to all try to stop this spread. We need to open it. We need to do what we need to do.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Dan, you're on deck. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Morning, everybody.
Morning.
Two things. Mr. Boyd, Chairman Boyd referenced the fair, which opened yesterday, and I had the pleasure of attending the opening ceremonies. We were along with Mr. Versillo from the old Ledger. Felt bad because it just, the skies opened up just as they were cutting the ribbon and raising the flag. It felt bad for some of the folks that were there for that. I did have the pleasure of running into a former Commissioner, Ed Fosnot, and his family were there, and at least two, maybe three of his grandchildren. But Ed looks well. It was nice to see Ed, nice to chat with him. The second and final note I'll make, it's a Pennbot matter, and of course, Pennbot's a state agency, but we don't have jurisdiction over Pennbot. But I want to remind everybody that if you're hoping to enter Interstate 376 from Mitchell Road in the Shannick Township, if you're heading towards Sharon, you're okay. You can get onto 376. But if you're wanting to head east, even though it feels like you're really going south, but if you want to head east, you can't. They're repairing the bridge. The same is true if you're coming from, let's say, Union Township from Walmart perhaps, and you're heading west on 376, you are able to exit to Mitchell Road. However, if you're coming from Sharon or West Middlesex, you cannot exit to get on the Mitchell Road. So I just want to, a lot of people use that artery, and just wanted to remind everybody of the closure as they do the bridge repair. Apparently, an overhyped truck a number of months ago hit the bridge and caused some structural damage to it. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just pass for today. If I have any updates on the Union Township project or something else, we'll give them next week. Moving on to new business. We have the Retro Bowl of MHDS here. Resolutions that specify some possible approvals to enter into a contract with Human Services Center Squad. If you'd be able to approach the bench. And Vanessa, what resolution number will this be?
197.
197, thank you. Squad, how are you doing today?
Good morning, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Floor of Service, what do we have going on?
So this is a renewal contract with MHDS and the Human Services Center. This contract will run from July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022. Contract is not to exceed $3,709,528 and is paid via block grant funding. It's a larger amount at the center.
I was going to say a better markup over $3 million.
The center historically has been our community mental health center. They provide really the vast majority of our mental health services. This is pretty hard residential programs, case management, crisis intervention, outpatient services for both mental health and intellectually disabled consumers. So just a couple of notes, though. We do have two new programs. One, I guess in the spirit of the fair, is a new farming initiative that really stemmed from a roundtable that Senator Elder Vogler had a couple of years ago.
Vogel.
Vogel. Thank you, sorry.
I always tell people, forgive me, people get our names mixed up all the time because they're very similar. He's Vogel, I'm Vogler, but I always tell people, fortunately for him, we're not related.
Sorry, Dan.
No, that's fine. We had a roundtable a couple of years ago, bringing awareness to the mental health and farming community. So with Human Services Center, it's a new service. If we started, it'll be more geared toward that culture there. And then our Compercanines, the Human Services, our animal assist therapy program, which is at the fair this year, so if you're at our table, it's up by water dock. But that's it for Human Services. Any questions?
Questions, comments?
No questions.
No. All right, what do we have going on for Rehab Links, and we'll make this 198.
This was our early intervention coordinator identifying a need to bring in another provider for our perp, the three-year-old. So this is a new contract between MHDS and Rehab Links. The contract will run from July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022. There are no dollar amounts attached to this provider. It's an entitlement program, so there's a no reject policy. This was brought in as an additional need to do these perp assessments for evaluations for kids that may have potential for disability. So I know I just did all those weeks ago, but this is a new one.
In terms of the funding for that, correct me if I'm wrong, with early intervention specifically, like you said, it's a no reject policy. In other words, anybody that comes into the system, we're under state law mandated to take a look at. My understanding of how the funding works for that is they give us a base amount of dollars, and then if we exceed that amount, they make us whole at the end of the year. Is that accurate?
Yeah, and it's based on, we just don't know how many we have, so you're absolutely clear.
Gotcha. Just wanted to clarify that for anybody wondering how the money works on that one. All right, any questions, additional questions, comments?
I do have a quick one. Where are they headquartered?
Donegal, Pennsylvania.
Westmoreland County, most likely.
Yeah.
Thank you. You have to reach out for some of those, so.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right. Squad, thank you very much. I don't think you'll have any issue with any of those passing. You're welcome to stick around for the rest of the show or if you have to take off somewhere else, we understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, great program in Pennsylvania Department of Agriculture, link is 199. This is the TEFAP program. What it is, is effectively the Department of Agriculture, per appropriation by the state legislature. It's awarded a sizable amount of dollars to help alleviate food insecurity in counties all across the Commonwealth. So every county, every year receives an allocation of dollars specifically for food programs. This resolution authorizes the Greater Pittsburgh Community Food Bank to act as the county's lead agency for, in the act of, distribution of temporary emergency assistance food program from October 1, 2021 through September 30th, 2026. They've historically administered the program, whereas they've done a good job. Through this program, different food banks in Lawrence County are able to go to the Greater Pittsburgh area food bank to get supplies. It basically acts as a centralized hub for some of our local suppliers here. They've done a good job. Last year, I don't have the award amount in front of me right now. For a few, two years, I know this past fiscal, our award amount was just under $150,000. So they do a fine job. And actually, they've helped out a lot with specifically related to COVID. I know a large number of community organizations tapped into that program to make sure that the residents all across the county did not have to go without food, even though they might have been laid off. Questions, comments on that program?
Real quick, and I concur, they do wonderful work. Amy might remember, because you've come to a lot of our Commissioner meetings, but I seem to recall, not often, but maybe two or three times since I've been here, folks from the Greater Pittsburgh Food Bank would come up and make a presentation to us. And it was always, do you recall that? Can you recall that happening at least once or twice? I'm thinking maybe next year, we might invite them just to come in and tell us a little more about what they do. It's very informative.
Absolutely.
You've covered it well, but it's nice having them come up and give us a lot of detail. So maybe something to think about next year.
Well, they're able to dig into the data much more than I'd be, you know, extra amount of distributions made, all different agencies that are supplying. No, they do a fine job.
Next year, I'll get someone to call and have them come down. Thank you. 199. Up next, this is a great amendment. Budget amendment, resolution. Received a hell of a lot more grant funding we anticipated from the fair account that fair, not being Lawrence County fair, as we talked about earlier, but it being.
Was a PH.
PH, ARE, and what this funding is for, we actually received dollars both to Lawrence County proper, Lawrence County as an entity, as well as Lawrence County Redevelopment Authority. Fair funding goes to housing rehab and demolition programming in the county. The bulkhead of this, what we're able to use for demolition, it's going to be used to tear down remaining repository structures right now. I believe, out of the contrary, 38 structures left, now 39 a couple of weeks ago. We have active bids out on six of those, so there's 32 structures left. And this funding is largely going to go towards completing those demolitions and getting those issues remediated. But yeah, we received a lot more than we're anticipating, and we're certainly going to take it. And just glad of the work that Amy and our planning office does in administering Lawrence County Blight Reduction Program. Questions, comments?
Can you take more comments, folks, floor?
If you have a question, we'll take it now.
How do you, is that mostly residential properties?
It's historically, and Dan might be able to provide better insight into this just because we've been sort of sidetracked with COVID, but historically, it's largely been residential properties. But the process for which these funds are utilized is if it's in the repository itself, generally, we don't require any initial approvals to get it demoed and put those dollars that way. If it's in a municipality, the municipality has identified it as needing to be torn down, the municipality, whether that be Shenango, Mahoning, Elwood, et cetera, submits to our planning office, our redevelopment office, basically requests for demolition. Those requests are compiled, they're brought before the county redevelopment authority, and the redevelopment authority selects projects to take out to bid and demo.
And is that, you have more than enough money to do that, or is that not enough to do the money that you're talking about? You talked, it was more than expected. Is that going to be more than you need?
Well, for our repository properties, with the exception of Lincoln Garfield School and City of Newcastle, which is cities handling, I believe that this amount plus the redevelopment authority itself, about $250,000, which is a total of $650,000. Some of that has to be used for housing rehab as opposed to demolition, but it should be roughly enough to tear down existing repository structures, all of them, in Lawrence County, with the exception of Lincoln Garfield, based on our current estimates. And then next year, you know, we will have more submissions from municipalities if we get more funding and, you know, continue to help our municipalities out that way, as well as any additional properties that might be brought into the repository.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Amy McKinney, our planning director, corresponds with all 27 boroughs and townships and the City of Newcastle, advising them that these funds are available. A good number of municipalities have responded to her. And if you'd ever want all the real details, we've kind of given you the overview, but Amy's office is just right around the corner. Be very welcome to meet with her, talk with her. She'd be happy to show you all the specifics.
Thank you.
Any additional questions, comments? All right, make that 200. IT, we are doing a budget amendment from Central Services, miscellaneous admin, $100,000 of IT maintenance and repair. Reason for this is, I think this is the generator that we purchased, backfilling dollars for that generator to make sure that in the event that power goes down again, the RIT, excuse me, RIT systems remain online operational. We don't run into any chaos.
Speaking of that, and I think it happened early last week, maybe about quarter after seven, we had a very, very brief power outage. And just two seconds, but it was long enough to turn everybody's computer off and then affect the cooling system. Frank's folks had to scramble to get the cooling system back up. Wonder, let me know. I'd forgotten to tell you, we did have a brief power outage.
Having more and more of those recently. I'll make that 201, questions, comments? And finally, our admin transfer for the day. We are moving from hospital, post-mortem expense $5,000 in the owners per DM accounts. Porter's been doing a great job saving on hospital and post-mortem throughout the year, and so there's a very sizable amount of funds in that account that we're able to utilize. It's necessary to be able to transfer to different accounts. He's asking to transfer five grand of that into his per DMs. Questions, comments on that? I'll take a motion to approve administrative transfer A.
So moved.
Second. Good motion, seconded. Any further discussion here, none? Question of motion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. I'll take a motion to amend the agenda to allow for voting on resolutions 2021-197 through 2021-201.
So moved.
Second. Good motion, seconded. Any further discussion here, none? Question of motion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Resolution 2021-197, now that it's resolved by Lawrence County Board of Commissioners, the agreement listed in the item two shall be approved starting July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022. Authorizations hereby given to execute the following intended Human Services Center income detailed in the attachment designated as 2021-2022. Program inscription rates are also listed within the attachment. Be further resolved as payments made out of the MHDS fund. Any questions, comments on that? Do we have motion?
So moved.
Second. We have motion of the second. Vanessa, please call a roll.
Commissioner Steel Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution 2021-198, now that it's resolved by Lawrence County Board of Commissioners, the agreement listed in item two shall be approved for period of July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022. Authorizations hereby given to execute the following contracts. Rehab links, bases detailed, and the attachment program rates and descriptions also listed within the attachment. Be further resolved as payments made out of the MHDS fund. Do we have motion?
So moved.
Second. We have motion, seconded. Any further discussion here, none? Vanessa, please call a roll.
Commissioner Steel Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution 2021-199, now that it's resolved by Lawrence County Board of Commissioners, authorizations hereby given to extend the agreement of understanding with Greater Pittsburgh Community Food Bank to act as the county's lead agency for distribution of temporary assistance food program TFAP from October 1, 2021 through September 30, 2026. Do we have motion?
So moved.
Second. Good motion, seconded. Any further discussion here, none? Question of motion, Vanessa, please call a roll.
Commissioner Steel Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution 2021-200, now that it's therefore resolved by Lawrence County Board of Commissioners, to amend the 2021 Lawrence County budgets, follows increasing the fair grant revenue account by $400,000, increasing the fair grant expense account by $400,000. Do we have motion?
So moved.
Second. We have motion, seconded. Any further discussion here, none? Question on the motion, Vanessa, please call a roll.
Commissioner Steel Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now, where is on the table for introduction or for final? Oh, wait, Mr. IT. Mr. IT. Every once in a while, we slip up. That's one of the reasons I'm glad I have two colleagues who are smarter than I am. Resolution 2021-201, now that it's resolved by Lawrence County Board of Commissioners, authorizations hereby given to the appropriate administrative official transfer to $10,000 scribbling the attachment, designated as T-2021-11. Do we have motion?
So moved.
Second. Good motion, seconded. Any further discussion here, none? Question on the motion? Vanessa, please call a roll.
Commissioner Steel Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Chairman. I have a question. It's a procedural, legal, technical question that we may want to consult with our solicitor about, or perhaps the three of you are way ahead of me on this. The legislature, as you know, amended the sunshine law and implemented a number of new provisions that I think take effect sometime by the end of the month in terms of posting of the agenda in advance of the meeting, et cetera, et cetera. One of the items I saw, and I probably should have focused more on it than I did, but as you know, we've been following a process where we have resolutions introduced, we discuss them, we get input from department heads when appropriate, and then in most instances, we then, as noted, we amend the agenda to then vote on them.
Yes.
Once in a while, we'll hold them over a week if there's a question, if there's something that we need more information on. And again, maybe one of the three of you can answer this. I'm wondering if that process whereby we take a formal action to amend the agenda to consider these proposed resolutions, if this new law affects that in any way, do either of the three of you know the answer to that? Because I don't.
I don't know, I would state maybe an assumption that we're either, A, going to have to formally put something on the agenda stating that, you know, a motion will be made to amend the agenda to allow for voting on those items, or alternatively, as opposed to even making that motion, treat each individual resolution as a vote, and worst-case scenario, we can table it if necessary to a future meeting.
I see what you're saying. In other words, when, for example, when the first one came up, when Scott's first one came up, upon conclusion of his report to us, then we take a vote.
Yep.
Okay. I'd like if we could just maybe, any one of us, whoever sees Attorney Madore first, if we just ask him to clarify, you're probably right, but if we could ask him to clarify that, because obviously, I don't want to violate the law, because I don't want to go to jail.
This is true.
Okay, fine, that'd be a quick walkover.
It'd look good, it'd go, right?
Three square meals a day in a shower.
And I think that that was brought up, I don't remember which municipality it was, but their solicitor brought it up that in the future, amending the agenda, you are not going to be able to amend the agenda once this law takes effect. So I don't know if they were voting on resolutions or not, but as soon as you said, I have a question on the new law, it, a little buzzer went off, not a loud one, but a little one. I remembered him saying that that was not, whatever they were doing with the amending the agenda to approve something.
Right.
Was not going to be able to be done. Now, what the solution was, I don't know if they got into it as far as that went, but yeah, good question.
And I'm wondering.
Quick question, to do it.
Yeah, I think each one has its complications.
We table it.
Yeah. Okay. But if one of us could, whoever sees Mr. Madore first, if we could ask him to.
Good spot, because it does take effect by the end of the month.
September 7th will be the first meeting of invitation for us.
Thank you for your help. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Now the ordinance is, we don't have any.
Right.
Up next, announcements. Our next Commissioner's meeting will be held on Tuesday, August 24, 2021, at 10:00 a.m. in this room. There will be a retirement board meeting today. Immediately following the Commissioner's meeting, by immediately following, I mean probably 15 minutes or so from now. Am I missing anything?
Prison board meeting tomorrow as well.
Okay. Meetings that my colleagues just referenced, the retirement board and the prison board are open to the public. Any additional public comments at this time? Floors?
A couple of comments first.
Sure.
I love what you're doing with Quaker Falls out there. I'm a bike rider, and will there be a bike trail out there too, at Quaker Falls?
I believe so. I doubt it. The photography, forgive me, you've been on the Stavix Trail.
Yeah, we do that. Littleville, and have a big lunch and come back, but that's wonderful. Then the second one, Loretta, I wanted to say about the COVID. I had my shots, but I was at Challenges yesterday, and a woman was bragging she's not getting her shots, and she's there, and she's not wearing a mask, and that shows disrespect for the rest of us, you know, so I'm glad you mentioned that. Then my question is the same one. The house on 18 that we bought for the district justice, is it just sitting there and we're still paying taxes on it?
You're talking about the one in the Shannick Township? Yeah, right now, we're still formulating a plan as to what to do with that.
Okay, okay.
There are no taxes being paid since we own it.
Right.
Oh, we're not paying taxes.
We're not, we're not. It's county-owned, it's tax exempt because it's owned by the county.
I didn't know that, I'm sorry for that.
You're fine.
And then in paper the other day, they mentioned that there was a 70% that the census did not do in Lawrence County. And I wondered where you got that figure. I happen to work for the census and an office in Cranberry, and I know we've sent people out pounding on doors and sent letters and made them go back pounding on doors. And people were mad at us that we kept sending them back out and out and out. And we got phone calls from people going, why are you bothering us? You know, and so I wondered where you got that, that's why I'm here. Where you got that figure of 70% of Lawrence County was not covered?
No, they did. Maybe it was a misprint in the article, but that, at least, to the best of my recollection, at least 70% of the residents of Lawrence County did respond. Did, did not.
Okay.
So if it was a misprint, it was a misprint. Yeah, we'll clarify that.
No, I probably took it wrong. I took that kind of personal.
I remember the exact numbers how we finished. I knew that we were, we were at like 68%, but we hadn't, the counting hadn't finished. And so I said, I know we had to get to at least 70%.
Right.
That did respond. So that, whether it was a misprint or not, but.
Because I know we.
Yes.
We had the office.
For the while that it was going on happening, I know I brought it up. And I think at one point in time, we were statistically close to 70%. And everybody, and that's when there were the second letters being sent out, third letters, phone calls, the online portals were open. We discussed the many different ways that people could respond to it.
Because in the office, we got calls from people that I went to your house, right? I didn't, but went to your house.
Yes.
Why are you bothering us?
Right.
And, you know, we really tried, so I kind of wondered.
I'm hoping that it's actually higher, but I didn't have an exact number when I was asked about it. But I knew that I could safely say that at least 70% responded.
And it's too bad that they don't realize, you know, we're not trying to get them. If they're here illegal, we're trying to see, you know, where our boundaries are and things. We weren't trying to hurt anybody. We were trying to help, you know, institutions and things that needed more money.
Absolutely.
So, but thank you.
I'm glad you came, no, I'm glad you came and asked the question. That way it's clarified. Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Any additional?
Yes, so, you know, in other parts of the state, a couple other counties have been asked to submit data and information on the vote for an audit.
Sure.
Has there been any requests to the Lawrence County?
None.
Is there any intention to audit the vote here?
The vote in Lawrence County has been audited twice. It's been audited once, they do a statistical audit, and twice. Ed would be better prepared to explain this than I would. I don't completely understand exactly what goes into it. I can definitively say the vote in Lawrence County has been audited twice by, under state law, under state statute. And we have not, we did not find any irregularities.
Well, you know, other areas of the country have been audited also, but there's been recent audit that uncovered, you know, irregularities that I'm concerned about. And I, you know, as a voter and a taxpayer, I would like to recommend that they perform an audit in the county.
Well, again, I'll know that two have been.
Okay, well, another one would be, not the same way, but well, I would like you to dig deeper in there with electronics and all that stuff. You know, speaking of electronics, you know, I know our votes were paper, then scanned. But then after that, is there, if it's even been found irregularities where there was chips in there that added votes or subtracted votes from different candidates, the whole country wide?
So I'm not familiar with that. I will say that, you know, again, based on our testing of the machines, we've encountered no irregularities in Lawrence County's machines. You know, we do check that stuff out.
The law permits, following an election, the law permits any individual to come in and petition for a recount if they believe there is a discrepancy. And now that we have the paper ballots, that's how that could have happened. Now, there's a time frame for the request for a recount. And to the best of my knowledge, following the 2020 election and even the 2021 primary, no one approached the county election office asking for any type of recount. But that opportunity is there. I think it also needs to be noted that counties cannot and do not make their own rules as it relates to elections. There's an election code that consists of all the laws that have been passed by the legislature that tell counties what they can and cannot do as it relates to elections. That election code is the law. And our election office and the three of us as the board of elections are obligated to follow that law. We can't make up our own rules. And the reason it's done that way is so that there is consistency amongst the 67 counties. So Lawrence County is following the same rulebook that Butler County is following and that Cambria County is following, et cetera. So we don't have authority legally to go above and beyond or outside of the parameters of the election code. And I give credit to Mr. Allison, who's our election director, because he's got that election code sitting on his desk, and he refers to it consistently because that's the rulebook that we're obligated to follow legally. We cannot deviate from it. And Mr. Allison's off right now, but if you'd ever want to go in and talk to, there's three folks at work in that office, feel free to win. They'll sit down with you and show you what rules they have to follow.
But there are counties that there were inconsistencies, at least alleged. And there, you know, there were requests for all the voting data and everything sent out. And I'm hoping that there'll be a subpoenas issued, waiting for that. And so there are inconsistencies. The law is the law, but there's a lot of people who don't follow the law. And that's why, that's why it's important.
Well, I can make, I can tell you definitively, and this is a testimony against our elections office, they follow those, the laws to a T point where when anybody is testifying before the state senate, state government committee or the House State Government Committee, our elections director is actually the one that's called many times to provide that testimony. And that's, I got a testament to him and what the state thinks of his operation. In Lawrence County, I'm only going to speak for Lawrence County because, you know, we were here, we observed it. You know, there was a commissioner on deck, you know, every single minute, every single second during the election, during tallying the ballots, during the entire process. And when it comes to Lawrence County, everything was done by the book. Two audits, we encountered no discrepancies whatsoever. Our machines were tested. We encountered no discrepancies there whatsoever. And I have no reason right now to suspect that any election irregularities occurred either in the 2020 election or the 2021 primary election in Lawrence County.
I appreciate your confidence. I still would like to say, I think it's going to come, I think it's going to come statewide. I think it's going to happen.
Well, if the legislature passes something or the legislature, you know, moves to act in any way, shape, or form, you know, at that point.
I don't have any reason to cast any aspersions on the election board, but I don't know. I don't know.
If you would like, when we conclude this meeting, if your schedule permits, I'd be happy to take you over and have you sit down with Mr. Germaine. Susan's on, Susan's on.
She's on, yes.
But I'd be happy, very happy to have you sit and talk with Mr. Germaine, who's the deputy. If you have time.
Well, I am fresh today.
Okay.
Thank you for the offer.
Whenever you'd like, the offer stands.
All right, thank you. I'm David Foster, I'm Little Beaver Township. David G.